Good evening.
Good evening.
I apologize, but we had a long, early meeting, so we will now begin the meeting of the Thursday of the 8th, 2018, the regular monthly meeting. At this time, I'd like for you to stand for a moment of silence, and then I'll have the pledge of allegiance. Amen. You may be seated. At this time, I'll have Dr. Bracy please introduce the students.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, and welcome to our board meeting. At this time, I would like to introduce you to three students that will be guiding us through the pledge of allegiance, as well as the school statement. As I call the students' names, will you please come forward? With the pledge of allegiance, I have two students. The first one is Cadet Private Kelton Boyne, who is a freshman. He has achieved several academic honors. Kelton, active member of the Army JRTC Drill Team, and is an active member of the Capital League Mentoring Program, in which he is the Sergeant at Arms. Here this evening with Kelton is his mother, Mrs. Veronica Boyne. Will you please stand, Mrs. Boyne, to be recognized? Next student, we have Cadet Corporal Laquel DeQueer. She's a sophomore and a member of the Army JRTC Program. She currently has a 2.96 grade point average. Laquel has received several awards and honors through the Army JRTC Program. Here with her this evening is her mother, Mrs. Kelly DeQueer. And Mrs. DeQueer, will you please stand to be recognized? And providing us with the student's statement, Cadet First Sergeant Michael Golden II. He's a senior with a 3.69 grade point average. He's the president of the National Honor Society, former Army JRTC Drill Team Member, member of the Presidential Men Academy, and member of the Capital League Mentoring Program. Michael is also an Educational Credit Management Corporation Scholar. He has received many awards and honors through the Army JRTC Program. He currently works in the office as the Cooperative Office Education Office Clerk and at Eastside Pizzeria. Michael is seeking admission to the United States Academy at West Point. Here this evening with Michael are his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Michael Golden. And would you all stand and be recognized at this time? I would also like to recognize School Administration, Ms. Sanji Harrison and Ms. Barbara Shields Walker, who are present. Will you all please stand? And Colonel Dickens, the Army JRTC Instructor. All right. At this time, I will turn it over to you all.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may now be seated.
Good evening, Mr. Parent, School Board Chair, and members of the Portsmouth School Board, Dr. Bracy, Division Superintendent, and members of the senior staff, and to our Portsmouth School family. I am Michael Joseph Golden II, and I am a senior here at Woodrow Wilson High School. And I'd like to welcome all of you to Woodrow Wilson High School, where President's Pride is Making Wilson Greater. Our students get the job done, respect themselves and others, engage daily in instruction, act responsibly, and travel effectively to class. As part of Making Wilson Greater, we start with our principal, Dr. Timothy Urqustein Johnson, in his 14th year, who has been recognized as a 2018-2019 Portsmouth Optimists Club School Leader of the Year. Also, he has been named the Family and Consumer Sciences State Outstanding Administrator of the Year 2018 through 19. In addition to Dr. Johnson, Ms. Karen Roberts, Nutrition and Wellness Teacher, has been named a 2018-19 Family and Consumer Sciences State Teacher of the Year. Ms. Courtney Huntley, Early Childhood Education Teacher, is a Woodrow Wilson 2018 Teacher of the Year. Here at Woodrow Wilson, we have many opportunities for student participation through sports, clubs, programs, and teams. The Knowledge Bowl Team, which is an academically focused team and is part of our Career and Technical Education Clubs, is an excellent example of how our students use their intelligence outside of the classroom. We also have a drama club, in which students are given opportunity to perform onstage actors to participate in Virginia High School League competitions. Another club we have is the Model UN, in which our students learn about diplomacy and international relations by representing nations and debating relevant issues with other schools. Woodrow Wilson is also home to the AJRTC Presidential Battalion Honor Unit with Distinction. Our AJRTC Program is the largest student organization on our campus. Our program participates in a multitude of extracurricular activities. We march in numerous parades, compete at drill competitions, volunteer at many events in the community, and even host a military ball and award ceremony for our students. Recently, the AJRT Drill Team won first place overall at the Military Order of the World Wars Competition at Hampton Recreational Center on October 27th, 2018. During the marching season, the Woodrow Wilson Special Forces Marching Band, along with the AJRTC Presidential Battalion, participates in numerous parades, such as our own homecoming and the homecomings of surrounding colleges and universities. Our Athletic Department is ending the fall season with district and regional participation and is looking forward to the winter season. Our senior class of 2019 looks forward to graduation, where we currently have over 300 candidates for graduation in the class of 2019. We are a fully accredited high school with a variety of academic programs, and we look forward to continued accreditation in 2019. We are promoting a focus on attendance as well as academics through our Just Show Up campaign, where our parents have a chance to win a Just Show Up On Time T-shirt and a Just Show Up Perfect Attendance T-shirt. We look forward to the many honors, awards, trophies, recognitions we will receive this school year, as we have done in years past, to make you, of course, our school board, proud of us.
Thank you. Thank you. The students, would you come forward, please? Reverend Joseph Fleming is going to present to you a token of our appreciation. Let's give him another round of applause. Thank you. At this time, I'll call Reverend Fleming to read the School Board Mission Statement.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, sir. At this time, our Deputy Clerk, call the roll, please. Attendants?
Allen.
Present.
Ms. Atkinson.
Here.
Reverend Fleming.
Present.
Mrs. Hines.
Present.
Mr. Lamb.
Present.
Dr. Whitaker.
Here.
Mr. Penn.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. The next item is approval of the agenda for this evening. You have had a copy of this agenda and reviewed it. What is the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is under student discipline, the consideration of an expulsion case, discipline case number 2018-19-03. This is roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Move for approval.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Good. Any discussion? Yes.
Chairman Parent, I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here the entire time.
Correct. Yes. Yes.
Chairman Parent, I just want to say that how I will be voting will be based upon the evidence that was presented accordingly. There's... Many times, these cases are very difficult, but this has been a very harsh, hard one, and therefore, based upon the evidence that was presented, my vote's going to reflect it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
No.
Reverend Fleming.
No.
Mrs. Hines.
No.
Mr. Lamb.
No.
Dr. Whitaker.
No.
Mr. Penn.
No.
The next item on the agenda is under student discipline, the consideration of an expulsion case, discipline case number 2018-19-03. This is roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Move for motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Good. Any discussion? Yes.
Chairman Parent, I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here the entire time.
Correct. Yes. Yes.
Chairman Parent, I just want to say that how I will be voting will be based upon the evidence that was presented accordingly. There's... Many times, these cases are very difficult, but this has been a very harsh, hard one, and therefore, based upon the evidence that was presented, my vote's going to reflect it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
No.
Reverend Fleming.
No.
Mrs. Hines.
No.
Mr. Lamb.
No.
Dr. Whitaker.
No.
Mr. Penn.
No.
The next item on the agenda is under student discipline, the consideration of an expulsion case, discipline case number 2018-19-03. This is roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Move for motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Good. Any discussion? Yes.
Chairman Parent, I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here the entire time.
Correct. Yes. Yes.
Chairman Parent, I just want to say that how I will be voting will be based upon the evidence that was presented accordingly. There's... Many times, these cases are very difficult, but this has been a very harsh, hard one, and therefore, based upon the evidence that was presented, my vote's going to reflect it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
No.
Reverend Fleming.
No.
Mrs. Hines.
No.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is under student discipline, the consideration of an expulsion case, discipline case number 2018-19-03. This is roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Move for motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Good. Any discussion? Yes.
Chairman Parent, I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here the entire time.
Correct. Yes. Yes.
Chairman Parent, I just want to say that how I will be voting will be based upon the evidence that was presented accordingly. There's... Many times, these cases are very difficult, but this has been a very harsh, hard one, and therefore, based upon the evidence that was presented, my vote's going to reflect it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
No.
Reverend Fleming.
No.
Mrs. Hines.
No.
Mr. Lamb.
No.
Dr. Whitaker.
No.
Mr. Penn.
No.
The next item on the agenda is curriculum and instruc... And... Oh, I'm sorry.
And Ms. Atkinson.
I abstained.
It's kind of awkward because we're all down the other ends. Thank you.
Ms. Atkinson.
Bell's in.
Okay. It bells.
Yes, it bells. Thank you. Now, curriculum and instruction.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. I will call your attention to the Curriculum and Instruction Written Report that is posted in Board Dots, but in addition to that, we have a really, really special treat tonight. Resilient Youth is a pioneer strategy of hope and action for those who will inherit Hampton Roads' rising seas. NOAA Environmental Literacy Grant to the Elizabeth River Project has afforded teams of students the opportunity to create innovative solutions to the challenges of rising seas and frequent flooding in Norfolk and Portsmouth. Tonight, we have two members of the Resilient Youth Team with us. The first is Kyrie Harris Chapman. They are both juniors here at Wilson High School. Kyrie is the son of Letissa Chapman, and he is 17 years old. He understands the importance of resiliency and protecting our local environment. When asked how he will help Hampton Roads, he said he can be helpful by discussing ideas to help slow down flooding in his and other neighboring communities. Additionally, Kyrie feels planting and creating gardens is a small way that he can help give back to the environment. In the future, he would like to work on bigger projects that will help influence more than just Hampton Roads community, but the world at large. This includes joining the fight on the search for viable alternative energy sources. "The need for an alternative source of fuel is greater now than it has ever been, and I would like to join that search," he said. An athlete, athlete, a scholar, and a gentleman, Mr. Harris ensures a sustainable future by leading by example to make our community flourish for years to come. He is a junior, and he has decided that he will either attend a four-year university or a two-year community college to further his love of science. Kyrie, would you stand? And if Ms. Chapman is here, your mother? We also have with us another junior, Mary Riley, and her mother is Andrea Raper. Littering and toxic pollution that damages the ecological stability of our area is paramount to this young 11th grader. She's a Portsmouth native whose passion for cleaning non-degradable pollution from our environment surpasses that of her contemporaries. As a member of the class of 2020, she has aspirations to attend Old Dominion University to study radiology in hopes to become an X-ray technician. X-ray technicians are able to examine the structure of the human body in a more abstract way, and because of this goal, Mary plans to use the remainder of her high school years to focus on chemistry and physics. Not only does she excel in academics, she's an avid swimmer and a former member of the swim team. Other extracurricular activities include DECA, and she is also a member of the students who want to become emerging leaders and entrepreneurs. Additionally, she participated in the national competition for the Family, Career, Community Leaders of America. Mary Riley. As she is coming down tonight, I want to point out that we have, of course, our administrative representatives here, as Dr. Bracy has introduced earlier, Ms. Sonia Harrison and Ms. Barbara Shields Walker. And in addition to that, we have Mr. Jamal Felton, who is the Environmental Sciences Teacher here, and Ms. Mindy Carbonow, who is the Curriculum Coordinator for the Elizabeth River Project, and I'd like to recognize them.
Good evening. Chairman Parent.
Good evening.
Dr. Bracy, members of the board, and all those assembled. My name is Mary Riley.
And my name is Kyrie Harris.
And we are both juniors here at Woodrow Wilson High School. It is our honor to speak this evening about science, Hampton Roads, and how becoming a youth leader with the Elizabeth River Project has improved our critical thinking skills and environmental literacy about our area.
We would be remiss if we didn't first state a major problem that affects us all: global warming. As our planet's temperatures increase, ice caps and glaciers are melting, causing excess water in our oceans and seas. Sea level rise continues to threaten coastal communities, and unfortunately, over time, Hampton Roads will become one of the hardest hit areas. Addressing the challenge of sea level rise requires community effort.
The effects of consistently growing temperatures not only cause ice to melt, but as water melts... As water gets warmer, it expands, resulting in flooded shorelines. A study published by Natural Hazards, a journal of crisis management research, determined that future sea level rise, population growth, and poorly planned development will increase the dangers associated with storms, surge, flooding in Hampton Roads, and suggests some techniques to improve resiliency.
Since working with the Elizabeth River Project, my overall consciousness of environmental issues has broadened. At this time, I would like to recognize Mindy Carbonow, Curriculum Coordinator for the Elizabeth River Project. Ms. Mindy, please stand. Because of Mindy's coaching and tireless efforts, I use the methods I've learned to communicate and collaborate effectively to help improve the resilience of Hampton Roads by informing other schools and communities of the dangers of sea level rise. My cohorts and I have worked with Mindy and her colleague, Deputy Director of Education, Robin Dunbar, in this grant-funded program for about a year now, learning about a host of topics, from resiliency to energy conservation.
Earlier this year, our group visited ODU's campus, where Dr. Michelle Covey from the Department of Oceanic and Atmospheric Sciences guided us through a number of laboratories and introduced us into a world of science we never knew existed, concepts such as using specialized probes and ice caps to learn how climate change affects glacial melting. We visit a biochemistry lab, where a graduate research assistant explained to us why biofuel is more than the future, it's present. We learned how organic compounds strong enough to power cars can be synthesized by a number of organic compounds strong enough to power... Sorry. Strong enough to power cars can be synthesized by a number of plant and plant-like material, such as corn, algae, and soybeans.
On the note of using alternative energy, we learned that educational campuses are adopting more effective, economical ways to approach urban and climate changes by building with plants, aptly named green infrastructure. For example, Dr. Sylvain Marcellet from ODU's Department of Microelectronics and Photovoltaics taught us that solar energy is the next thing in energy convenience. Businesses continue to improve solar panel technology and the material in which it is composed.
Thank you to the board and all those present for allowing us to speak with you about science, Hampton Roads, and the future. Good night.
Thank you very much. Let's give the...
Thank you so much. Young people, I want to say that I'm very excited about the things that we're doing with science here in Portsmouth, and as we all have experienced, the sea rising and the global warming, and recently, the hurricanes and the tornadoes, we know that this is very important research, so I'm excited about the things that you're doing.
Thank both of you. This is my favorite part of the program, is that C and I reported, and having the students to come. I think that, I mean, it's nice to read the reports that you give us, but it really is great hearing from students. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is roll call vote, and it's consideration of special interest class offerings for adult education. Earlier at our meeting, you had an opportunity to review that. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made. And second, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. This time, we'll have presentation, employee groups, budget, and salary requests for the 2019-2020 school year. Dr. Bracy? Do we have... Do we have members to speak according to budget?
No one's speaking.
Yes, no speakers. Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of October 11th, 2018, and October the 18th, 2018. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment for non-agenda items. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, we do.
Would you read the... Would you read the rolls, please?
Yes. The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. The public comment period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman.
Thank you.
The first speaker is Mrs. Donna Sye.
My name is agenda... My name is agenda... Oh, I'm sorry, babe.
Then the first speaker will be Ms. Angel Bunton.
My name is Angel Bunton, and I am a resident of Portsmouth and a member of the Portsmouth Chapter of Virginia Organizing. Virginia Organizing is a grassroots organization with chapters all over the state. We work on issues impacting minorities and residents of Virginia who are underrepresented. We have tried multiple times to connect with Dr. Bracy, both over the phone and email. It's been about three weeks, and we've not heard back. In October, the Virginia Department of Education came out with data for Portsmouth on suspensions for the year of 2017 through 18. Suspensions have only decreased from 2,264 students to 2,244 students last year. This is despite changing the code of conduct and implementing PBIS. We want to know why this is the case. We point out that Dr. Bracy worked well with us last year, and we hope this partnership continues. We ask that you contact us as soon as possible, so that we can schedule a meeting to talk about this troubling issue. In short, we request a collegial meeting with Dr. Bracy to talk about what he thinks happened last year to cause a failure in reducing the suspensions. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have other speakers?
No, sir.
Next item is the discussion of board agenda items. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, Mrs. Donna Sye.
Good evening. My name is Donna Sye, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Learning does not occur in a vacuum. Portsmouth needs an inclusive education dialogue between all stakeholders to try to understand the complexities of schooling more deeply and identify the problems. The public education system in Portsmouth is in crisis. Looking at the structure of the Portsmouth School System, one can see that intimate primary relationships have been displaced by an impersonal bureaucracy. Students and teachers do not relate to one another as whole persons, but in narrow, limited
How is this curriculum and instruction department correlating the adult special interest offerings with the students? Example three, 5.3, reports attendance and school accreditation comparisons. Students' attendance is one factor that impacts their learning. A student is considered chronically absent if he or she misses 10% of school days. The number of students missing 0 to 10% is over 11,643 students. This leaves 2,600 students who are chronically absent 10 to 20% of school time. Let's review the over 4,000 students who do not have proficiency in reading. Of these, 2,696 students are chronically absent. Being absent from school affects a student's ability to learn to read. These 1,300 having difficulty reading even though they aren't chronically absent. What is causing this, over 1,300 students having a lack of proficiency in reading? Looking at this statistics for reading, it is a small example of what is occurring in writing, math, and history for students achievement by proficiency level. Learning does not occur in a vacuum. Let's improve communication with parents and the public. This would be remedied by the Portsmouth School Board elected and appointed, creating four committees, curriculum, human resources, finances, facility.
Excuse me, Mrs. Si, your time is up. What is the board's pleasure?
Sure.
You may, you may finish.
This would be the first step to increase all students proficiency level in all their subjects because the parents and community would be engaged in students' learning process. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Not listed. No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
There's a statement that I need to read. If there are any additional speakers, you may request permission to speak from the board at this time.
Good evening, my name is Sergio, and I live at 1560 Darren Circle here in the city of Portsmouth. First of all, I would like to say I did indeed email to register to speak tonight. But I understand, I can see Ms. Chamberlain isn't here, so by all means, but anyway. Speaking on the topic of suspensions and the point that was raised by Ms. Angel, the member of Virginia Organizing, we, you know, I looked at it and I definitely understand the challenges that were faced last year in school systems region-wide, and a lot of the challenges that were faced, you know, especially with the hoax threats and things of that nature. And we understand things have to be done in accordance to the code of conduct. One thing that, you know, that we would like to see and like to continue is to work with the community partners that are trying their hardest to work with the school system to ensure, to see what can be done to further lower the number of short-term suspensions issued. We understand that, you know, we have different challenges. However, we have also offered different alternatives to suspensions, and many of them that come with a very low to no cost. We understand that, you know, PBIS has been implemented, and that's great. You know, we hope that it's working as designed. You know, we hope that it's implemented across the school district, and it should. But, you know, we can't deny that the numbers reflect what they reflect, you know. And, you know, of course, we just exited out another election season. We have new board members coming in. We want to make sure that they are aware, since they are here tonight, that this is one of the issues that will come up again. We don't want to sit by and be idle, you know, provide lip service and say, you know, we're going to do this and do that. But we want to make sure that action is being taken, you know. A lot of times, you know, we hear the narrative, oh, you know, African-American students are disenfranchised. Guess what? I find that to be disheartening when we live in a city that's predominantly African-American. So how can that be? You know? So I think that, and I'm going to be the first one to say, that I stand before you as a person that feels for any student that's having a problem with behavior. No race, no ethnicity, no culture limits. All of these students are a part of Portsmouth Public Schools. And we need to find out what it is that can be done to help them. Is there some alternative that's not being looked at that needs to be looked at? Do we need to up the level of parental involvement? Absolutely. I encourage that. Sometimes in life, we have to do things out of the ordinary to encourage that. You know, we, I would hate for us to say, you know, we've done all we can, let's just throw these students away. But at the same time, too, we also understand that respect and classroom control has to be in place. So what do, what do we do to address this problem? We have a lot of people that say, you know, we are active in the school system, and it can't be just during election time. It, that just doesn't fly here. We have to be active, if we're going to be, if we're going to do some work, we have to do some work all the time, not just some of the time. I think the citizens and parents and the school system staff, especially the teachers, are kind of aggravated at these statistics because this is not a reflection, a positive reflection of them. You know, we definitely want to do our part, but we have to open the lines of communication. And in order to solve a problem, you have to start talking about it. I get it, it's not a positive headline, but at the same time, it's a headline nevertheless. And if we don't start addressing this problem seriously now, we're in for a rude awakening. I'm quite sure you all know, the research shows that prisons are built off of the number of suspensions issued. When they see kids being constantly suspended, that helps them determine how many prisons need to be built. Do we need to be building prisons, or do we need to be building schools? I think the answer is very simple. So my challenge to you all is, as a board, for some of y'all, you know, that would be here further, is to really start paying attention to what's going on. Let's keep the lines of communication open, and let's help one another, one another resolve this problem. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. So I just want to say that I'm a big advocate for suspensions and reducing suspensions, and any decrease is great increase. So what I have seen is actually the numbers haven't, have decreased, even if it is by 20. That's 20 less suspensions than the previous year. And I can also vouch and say that there are measures in place since I've been in office from this year to the following year that has been put into place by Dr. Bracy to reduce the suspensions. We also have some upcoming positions that are grant-funded that's also going to assist in that process. Trust me when I tell you, we're not sitting back relaxing on this issue of suspensions. There are things being done, there are things in place. We pushed to have that volunteer sign up on our website, and since that time, we haven't had many volunteers sign up. I mean, I fought for that. And where are the volunteers who said they were going to sign up and come into schools and assist these teachers with it? I don't, I don't see anybody sign, it's on the website. It's on the website. Anybody can fill that out and come in and help these teachers and assist with the suspensions. And that process was put in place, and nothing is done about it. So we can't keep working towards something and the outside is not assisting us with this. I mean, we are giving everyone what they're asking for, and nobody is taking action on it. Thank you.
Have any other comments from board members? Okay? There are no others speaking?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is under Human Resources, and it's the monthly report. Mr. Scott Ziegler.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, board members, Dr. Bracy. Glad to share with you this week's, this month's Human Resources report. There's some good news in there for you to view. You see, the Department of Human Resources and Portsmouth City Public Schools have received two grants to help our teachers out. The first one was a $25,000 grant for our middle school, middle school teachers, and we have five teachers who qualify for that grant of $5,000 each. And we have also received a grant from the Commonwealth of Virginia to assist preschool teachers in costs directly related to obtaining a professional teacher license. And we have two teachers who will receive tuition assistance for that to become fully licensed. I've also put a screen grab in there of our latest mass emailer. And you see, the goal here is, this is going to become our template. We're going to have an article that is of interest to applicants. We're going to share some good news about Portsmouth City Public Schools. We will feature a job, this month we featured our substitute position, and we will also highlight the good things about living in Portsmouth. So we think that that is a good way to bring applicants into Portsmouth, familiarize them with the school division beyond just putting job announcements out there and really helping them to get to know our city and our community. I also have for your consideration tonight, the Employee Transaction Report as amended, and I would ask that you entertain a motion to approve that report as presented.
All right, the, there's a roll call vote for Employee Transaction Report for November 2018. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion's been made and second, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discuss, yes, Mr. Lamb.
Just one question. Of course, we had a busy early session with things. But a question just came to mind, as I'm looking on here, there seems to be, when you look over just November, year-over-year trend, there seems to be an increase, and I do notice that we have the categories or the rationale or reasons why given. But is there any other explanation that we can give why there may seem to be an increase?
Are you looking at the total resignation report?
Yeah, for 18, 19, and looking at November, and then looking at 17, 18, November.
You see there an increase of nine people. Just this month, we think we have two or three retirements on there. And we've had quite a few early year retirements this year that I think are making up for that. As people become, retirement eligibility is based in large part on your age, and as people turn the appropriate age, I think if they're ready to retire, they don't really pay attention to what month of the year it is. But as you see, we have two instructional, or one teacher and one instructional assistant on the retirement just for this month.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing no? Done. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming? Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is the addendum to the Employee Transaction Report.
Move for approval?
Motion's been made and second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Ziegler. The next item is under Budget and Planning. And I'm going to ask Mr. Theodore Falk to come and present those.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Perrin.
And welcome aboard, attending you.
School Board members, Dr. Bracy, I stand before you to present the consideration of revised budget items for the general fund, textbook fund, grant fund, and risk management fund for fiscal year 2019.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? We're going to vote on each of these individually. Any discussion, hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please, for item 10.1.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
And before we go, Mr. Falk is our new chief financial officer, and we welcome you to your first meeting. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of a revised budget for fiscal year under textbook funds.
Move for approval? Second?
Second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
The next item is 10.3, which is the consideration of the grant fund. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval?
Motion's been made, and I heard a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
The next item is 10.4, which is under Risk Management. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval?
Motion's been made.
Second.
And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker? Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Seven yeses, one no.
Thank you. All right, the last item is under the superintendent, and it's the superintendent's report, Dr. Bracy.
I need to make a correction, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's six yeses, one no.
Thank you, Chairman Perrin. Just a couple of things I want to share in my report this evening. And first, the operations report is attached, so you can see that. Earlier today, I sent out an email involving the live streaming of our school board meetings. And starting December 13th, we will have our first live streaming that will, that will take place. The Communications Department, along with IT, have been working together to make this happen. Last couple of meetings, we've had some piloting going on, and everything has gone well. Couldn't do that tonight because we were off-site, but we look forward to a successful live broadcast at the December meeting. Also want to announce for the Portsmouth School Foundation, they will have the distinguished alumnus luncheon, and that'll be Wednesday, December 12th, at 11:30. And you probably have received some information on that, but the person that will be recognized, the honoree, will be Ward Robinette Jr., and he's a class of 1965 Churchland High School graduate. So those of you that can, come out and support the foundation and this program. We look forward to seeing many of you there. The last thing I would like to share, next week, as you all are aware, we have the VSBA, the Virginia School Board Association Conference. And starting Wednesday, board members, I know in myself, will be leaving to attend the conference. But I would like to bring to your attention, on Thursday, November 15th, scheduled at 12:45 and 1:45, Reverend Patello and I will be presenting, leading a session on our JASON Learning, our STEM program. The director, Dr. Eleanor Smalley, asked if I would come and share some of the activities through JASON that we're performing here in Portsmouth. And part of that, Gina Patterson, that's the executive director for the School Board Association, asked myself and the superintendent from Southampton, who will also be part of that, that presentation, to have one of our board members present with us. Ms. Patterson requested Reverend Patello because of his position within the chair of the region. So I asked him to join, join me in that presentation. So we look forward to sharing the great things that are going on with STEM in Portsmouth. We met this morning with Ms. Nelson and her team, just to make sure that we
We met this morning with Ms. Nelson and her team, just to make sure that we, while covering everything, that we didn't want to leave anything out, so we have lots of pictures in our PowerPoint that we plan to share. So we look forward to it, and I look forward to the board members that will be attending to see you in that session. That concludes my report.
Before we go with to the board members' comments and concern, I would like to introduce school board member, two school board members that were just elected. School Board Member-elect member is Tamara Schumich. And we have with us also, school board member-elect, Deandre Barnes. Now, board members, do we have any comments or any concerns that you'd like to bring up this evening? Lamb?
Yes, just a couple things, and this has been mostly with topics and issues that came up, you know, this evening. We had a loaded agenda, to say the least. With regards to what was presented to us as far as suspensions, and I do agree with fellow board member Atkinson, there's been different strategies and things that have been put in place to try to help curb suspensions, but of course, we also know that some things were brought up during the school board retreat, and that needs to be looked at and worked on. As I looked at some of those numbers that was given to us, I don't know if there's a way to actually do this or not, but I know this has been a discussion before with regards to breaking this down between individual students versus actual infractions, because I think that's two different things. I mean, you look at a number, and so is the data really reflecting that's the amount of students, or is that really the amount of infractions? And I think that would help relieve or solve some questions. The second thing is Chairman Parent. We discussed this in the earlier meeting a little bit, and we've mentioned it before, and I do agree, and I think it is time that possibly even the next meeting or even before this, that we do set up the, have a discussion, vote, set up the suspension committee and what that's going to look like, because it's long overdue. We've had this kind of revolving door with some cases at some parts of the years, and also, too, as it was so much said earlier, the Department of Education is going to look at chronic absenteeism, and that is part of accreditation. So it's two, you know, it's two strikes. It's really this aspect of students being out of school for an extended period of time, and also now that the accreditation numbers are in place. So I would, I would hope, and I think, that this is something that we would want to move on quickly than instead of later. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Hines is your end.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to address Board Member Lamb's issue about the Discipline Committee, it's been something that my four years I've been here, it's been discussed and tossed around and has been discounted at the fact that this board wants to hear everything, mainly for consistency's sake. As we talked in our committee, the Curriculum Instruction Committee meeting two weeks ago, we did discuss the coming back to a Discipline Committee, and one of the suggestions that was given was having a Discipline Committee Chair and having two rotating members of the committee, whether by quarter or by month, but that way, that would at least give you some consistency and some oversight. I do think we need to have a discussion about it and look at having it start in January, because the days that we're missing, and we've all discussed this, for hearings, once it gets past the Discipline Committee to come to us, is eating away at a lot of our days out of school. But I also think, too, that we need to have some in-house adjustments to that schedule as well, where the schools don't wait until the 10th day to send their stuff to Dr. Sanderlin and the Discipline Committee, that we need to tighten up on those days as well. So I think it's a piece we need to look at, but it's also a piece we need to look at with Dr. Bracy and his staff to cut down on the in-school piece before it even gets to us piece, because let us not forget, we hear less than 5% of the discipline cases that this division hears. Thank you.
And what they've been talking about is the, under the new standards of learning accreditation of the State Board of Education, it's now added the attendance and the dropout. And so for years, this is my eighth year on the board, we have discussed that three-member panel, and it's always been the board's pleasure of all of us hearing the case for consistency, but now that they have mandated these new regs, it will affect us. So I think we, it's very smart for the board to consider, and we need to do it very quickly. Yes?
And Chairman Parent, I was just making sure that we're still keeping the data for suspensions per infraction and per student in the schools. We are still keeping that monthly?
Yes. We don't pull it every month, though. Is that what you're asking?
Yes. So if we could, we would be able to, if we wanted to, would we be able to pull it every month for board members to review? Are we able to do that?
Yes, we are. I think we were doing that at one time. We were doing that at one time, but then when it got close to the testing window for benchmarks and SOLOs, we backed off until they finished with that. But yeah, we can, we have access to do that.
Okay.
Anybody else? Oh, Ms. Allen?
I just want to make sure that as we're moving forward with the disciplinary committee that it's at the front of the board that we do include the two new school board and ranked people, because there are also going to be...
Oh, absolutely.
...put on that. So I want to make sure that we're not moving forward without at least including them in that discussion.
Oh, absolutely.
That they're coming onto the board.
Absolutely. Ms. Lamb?
Sorry about this. I know that I went earlier, but since my colleagues have discussed this as well, you know, the thing about suspensions and so forth, it's not just about suspending kids. I know that we have put in place PBIS, and I hope that at the end of this year, we will have a more complete data to see how well it's actually working, you know, for us. I know that there's things that's out there now, these students, these kids, they deal with so much. I know PBIS can be incorporated as part of trauma-informed. I know the state is also looking at providing money, grant money and so forth, for trauma-informed strategies. And my point of saying this is this right here. Anytime that you have to suspend, and I don't have a problem with suspending when a situation calls for it, but anytime that you suspend a student, you're already losing. You're already at a loss with things. And if we could just get better of putting in place, call it what you want, strategies, implementation of things, training, that would allow for students to be able to catch things, or teachers and administration to be able to catch things beforehand, before it gets there, that would help solve and correct this. But it's more than a school effort. This has got to be a community effort. It's disappointing that, you know, we have a sign-up for volunteers and there's no volunteers. It's sad that we have a citywide PTA President Council that comes, that came and spoke about that we had a couple hundred volunteers as PTA members. I know people are busy. We're all busy. But you sometimes got to prioritize, you know, importance, and I can't think of a higher importance than your own children or even just children that's in a community and so forth. So, I mean, we can talk about suspensions, and we definitely need this committee and so forth, but I would like to start looking at even more, just even beyond PBIS if need to, things such as trauma-informed, to try to alleviate and relieve the situations that starts and that comes into the schools at that point. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? The last item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
And I don't think anybody wants to stay here all night. Thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate it.